No, we didn't do that. We did take a train from Port La Harve into Paris.
Yeah.
Did you ride the train from London to Edinburgh?
Nope.
That's fun.
Is it?
Yeah. Goes like a bat out of hell.
Edinburgh is something else.
Yeah, no.
That is a impressive city.
Yeah, it sounds wonderful, yes. It's great, so nice. And the weather was good?
The weather was alright, yeah, it was cool and I mean, you know, you're in the North Sea, North Atlantic, it's cool and fifty-five degrees.
Yeah, that's not bad, that's not bad, better than heat.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was, we had a nice mix of weather.
Oh, good.
Try this one on there?
Good, that's great.
Yep, got some Scottish roots all the way?
Yeah, we do, actually, yeah, we do, yes.
Plane makers, Spears.
What's that?
Wooden plane, wooden plane maker Spears.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Air Scotland. You spell your name with an I-E.
E-I.
E-I, yeah, that's it. Spears, Spears plane.
No kidding?
Air Scotland.
I had, really, also on my mom's side, Munro.
Spears, but isn't that German? Spears, isn't that German?
No, that would be, it's, I think that's either English or Irish is where that side of the family supposedly comes from.
Okay.
And then my mother is more Scottish.
Oh, okay. Germans, so.
Oh, yeah. But definitely, it does, it does kind of, the E-I and it's kind of, it's never been, nobody ever said German and.
Okay, great, 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 yeah. You know, my parents can. I'm direct.
So, something going on up in the quarter.
It's, it's a very, it's a very rare name.
It's the way you spell it, yeah.
It's very few.
So, right now, you're doing, are you just doing, are you doing other meetings right now? Spears, okay, what's your next meeting? Chris Lawrence? Yes. Okay, when's your next one?
How are you doing? Good, good, good.
Once you give me a call next week, I might sort of, that would be sweet.
The I-N, the reverse, it's close, it's really close.
Oh, you're E-I, not I-E, yeah.
Yeah.
Air Scotland.
One of the better, early century plane makers.
If I'm supposed to get you something, do you want to hand up bill? Did I give you Tony's contact?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can't see it, but they.
I'll review my notes, but I thought there was something.
Very precise plan.
Yeah, from here on, everyone was.
See what they go.
Of multiple caregivers that have to operate as four separate things. If they operate as a dispensary under one license, they can operate more together under one license in one facility.
They're trying to get out of the caregiver rules.
Yeah, yeah, and for licensing is really my understanding. So they can just license as one instead of four individual caregivers.
A little. Don't we already allow cultivation facilities?
You do, but you don't reference this license type, which is a license type by state.
The only issue is that we're allowing the medical cultivation instead of the.
No, so you're allowing the second, we'll call it, say, second category of medical, because you allow caregivers, which is one license type. And now by adding these definitions, you're going to allow the dispensary. And then if you recommend these changes, the council will consider amendments to the licensing ordinance to also reflect this.
I see that sort of from the outside, which is always how we've viewed this. It's like, what is the impact going to be on any sort of abutters or the community as a whole? The outside, like, the impact is no different than if the business owners chose to go through a different licensing process. We are already allowing all of this. It's just that we're allowing a little bit of additional flexibility for the business owner to choose an easier licensing path so that they can run their business in a more streamlined.
But you are adding that parameter that, you know, today.
Turn it into a store.
They can't have that point of sale, which as a caregiver, they legally have to.
So that we. We discuss this.
If they want to go be a caregiver, then that's not good. But if they, so that, you know, it's more, more choice and without any sort of downside that I can see other than more.
Do you want me to have promote the applicant to panelist? Do you want to hear from the applicant? You want to wait till it's a public hearing? It's a public hearing.
I think we should just open a public hearing, have them talk in the pub. I mean, I think we've all been through this before and we wrote this up.
Is that a motion, Mitch?
Yes, I would like to motion, make a motion that we open a public hearing, let the applicant talk first.
Second.
Second.
From Rosemary, all in favor? So the public hearing is now open, so anyone who's here.
That was unanimous, Sharon.
Anyone who's here, including the applicant or anyone else on Zoom? Can't see that far.
Oh, sorry, David's, it's just rejoining as a panelist.
Okay. Is there anyone else on Zoom or is it just David?
No, you guys are not that popular tonight. It's just David.
Honestly, doesn't shock me the day before. Okay, well, yeah, anyone, anyone who's here or and or David? If you want to speak, please raise your hand. If you need to, I guess if he's a panelist, he doesn't have to.
David, if you want to speak, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
We got you.
Good evening. This is David Stevenson, the applicant for Hazy Hill Farm. Yes, we have all gone over this a number of times. I think we're all on the same page. All I'm really asking is for the ability to change licensing. Nothing else is really going to change. My facility, you know, is cannot get any bigger. I'm not looking to open a retail store. I'm just looking to acquire this dispensary cultivation license because more attractive and less paperwork essentially than doing multiple caregivers with my wife and our employees. So it's, I appreciate you guys going through the motions and, and, you know, making sure that all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. And I think we're, I think we're in a good spot. And I appreciate the town's willingness to help existing small business. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the, the application or my business if, if you guys have any.
You've read the language, right?
My office manager, Jesse Laurie, has read it and as, as has my attorney. So I have not read it, but I'm, I'm feeling confident in it, to be honest.
That was the question.
Yeah, I feel good with it.
Great. Unless anyone has any other questions or comments in the public? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Another unanimous motion. So the public hearing is now closed in the absence of further questions or discussion. I think we have been over this. I suspect we have at least one nay vote, which is okay. And otherwise, I think if anyone wants to take a stab at a motion to.
Or did anyone help us?
To the council? Yeah, I don't know if we have any draft motions. It seemed, to me, the, the one that jumps out from the vision statement.
You can't do it.
No, I know, but I, I, I was.
I was asking.
I think the, there's a line about encouraging small business, right? Diversity of small business.
And the comprehensive.
Yes, we should have this handy all the time.
Ryan, do you have a vision?
I'm going to pull it up for you.
Right here.
David.
Top two of the first one.
Everybody just presumes that Mitch.
Yeah, why is it?
I'm just showing it. You don't want to see it.
You can go for it.
Freeport Planning Board motions to Freeport Town Council to accept changes made in, where are we here?
He's going there.
In section 241 of our zoning ordinance to allow the.
Wait, sorry, section 104?
104.
Oh, 104, I'm sorry.
And 535.
Definitions of section, public hearing, I'm sorry. To recommend to the Freeport Town Council changes to section 104 definitions, definitions in section 535, the cannabis establishment of chapter 21 in the Freeport zoning ordinance to provide diversity of goods and services, attract visitors and sustain residents consistent with the community's character and provide a diversity of commercial enterprises that provide a wide variety of jobs consistent with community character. What else do I need to say? I think that's it.
As presented and discussed at the 7324 planning board meeting.
Presented and discussed at the 7324 planning board meeting.
Is it worth, is it worth adding a sentence there like, this does not change the prohibition on retail establishments of cannabis?
It's your motion, Mitch.
Well, it's Dave's motion.
It does not, it does not change the, it does not change the.
Prohibition.
Prohibition of, of retail dispensaries in the town of Freeport.
All right, second?
Second.
All in favor? So we have six in favor and one.
Do you oppose or abstain?
I'm opposed.
Oppose, I'm on opposed. Sorry, that is a good call. To get the.
That's yours.
Okay. That ends item number three. Moving on to item number four is a discussion of possible amendments to section 421, the industrial district of the zoning ordinance regarding the required buffer strip around the perimeter of the district. This is an applicant driven, driven zoning amendment request. The applicant is Tim Cooper of 172 Lower Main LLC.
So I'll give you a little bit of background here before we have the applicant come up. It is an applicant driven agenda item. AEC Engineering is an existing business in Freeport on Lower Main Street. In review of the file, it looks like years and years ago when they went through site plan, which even predates me, they, there was a different interpretation of how the buffers were being interpreted. So that building today doesn't meet the 100-foot buffer requirement. It was legal, went through site plan, got permitted, but it's an interpretation that is no longer valid. They would need to meet today's standards as written.
The building as it sits is already non-conforming.
Yes, yep, it's, is non-conforming, but the buffer, you know how we talked a year ago or so about increasing non-conformity?
Yes.
This is not a case, the buffer is not a case you can increase the non-conformity, which is why they're here. So they're here just to introduce it and talk about it. And the other thing, I just want to make sure everyone's familiar with what we're talking about for zone, because this is actually a pretty small zone. And Tom set me up with a new screen share feature, so give me a minute. Hopefully he'll come running in. Let's see. There we go. Okay, here he comes, but I did it before he got here. Maybe. Close. The computer is not happy. What I'm trying to show you is the zoning map. Is this one or?
No, we want to see.
You'll see that, I just want to show you before we get into the details from the applicant. That's my screen and that's your screen.
There we go.
Magic. Thank you. It's a little bit blurry. I don't know if you can see the cursor, so.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
So you don't need to share to Zoom. You just need to have it up on your desktop.
Okay.
So you stop.
You may stop it here.
Stop sharing.
And then you're going to zoom in on camera?
Yep.
Oh, but that's why they're seeing the fuzzy view.
So. Go back to quick share. Share that. Hide that.
Okay, this is looking, this is looking good.
This is looking good. Okay, so here we're talking about the industrial one. It's the small park, pocket you can see right where my cursor is. That's the railroad bridge, so it's right when you go over the railroad bridge, just south of Public Safety. It goes just about down to Wilbers. A majority of this on the east side is the LL Bean headquarters that they just redid. And then on the opposite side of this street, it's AEC Engineering. You can see they're kind of right in.
Can we see, is it that white piece?
Yes, just the white.
Yeah, it's like this little, no, it's this little L shape. And then behind them used to be Eastland Shoe. I think they still are in there. So it's these two properties.
That is the parcel.
This is the parcel, this L is the parcel where they're located. But again, we're talking about a zoning amendment.
I understand.
So it would impact everyone in the district. So they are surrounded by VC1, VC3, V1R, RR1, RRT, no, RR1 and, sorry, actually, RR2 and C3. So that kind of shows you the setup. Do you want to zoom in more?
No. So why is this? I want to clarify the question, the, the way the code is written today and what the rule is about buffers.
Okay. I want to tell you one other thing before we look at the language.
That's fine.
One other thing at the end of the conversation that I want you guys to consider is we looked at, you have a robust, in my personal opinion, notification policy in some cases. And then in other cases, you have something like this, that we don't notify everyone in the district and we don't notify abutting properties like we do in other cases, because we're not adding a new use. So after we're done the discussion tonight and talk about next steps, that's something I want the planning board to revisit. If we're just putting it on the regular agenda in legal ads or if they want us to do a mailing like you do with other things, that's something you guys can decide under your rules of order by a vote if you want. It was just something we felt we should make you aware of, because as written, it wouldn't get into category. So the language before you is, so today, a buffer strip that leaves 100 feet in depth shall be created around the perimeter of the district. So.
Above, around the perimeter of every district in town, there's 100-foot buff?
No, today, it's for this one, the perimeter. So where, where this parcel is like the edge boundary kind of between C3 and VC3 that have to meet that 100-foot setback on multiple sides. They wouldn't have to meet it on the rear, because the rear abuts I1, if that makes sense. Anywhere that I.
But, but this buffer rule is, is around industrial zones?
We have, I'm not sure if it's identical. I think it is. We have a similar and industrial two out on Desert Road, that 100-foot buffer. Yep.
So the proposal is to make it just apply to residential zone?
Yeah, so it's interesting, because you have a 100-foot buffer, yet you have a really small setback here. But the applicant's here, and I'm happy to pull up, I can pull up the original I1 language.
Law first.
Here, let me pull this up so we can look at it together, Mitch.
I lost this letter.
I mean, it's only like parcel size is an acre.
Well, in this case, his front setback is 100 feet. The side and rear setbacks are 15 feet. It has 100-foot setback from a lot line from a parcel with a residential use, which in this case, there's none.
Right.
He's surrounded by commercial properties. There are other properties in this zone, more particularly across the street, which I believe do potentially abut residential properties.
So could I ask you another question? Could this problem, assuming we wanted to solve it, be solved with the way we solved the other problem with increasing, with, you know, increasing the non-conformity? Assuming this doesn't increase the non-conformity, you know, in other words, it doesn't get closer, I don't know what the plan is that they want to.
I think, I don't know, you know, it's not something we have.
So that wouldn't even work in the way, it wouldn't work in this case.
It would work in this case, but I think, why don't you hear from the applicant? They went through a bunch of scenarios and there's a reason they came up with this proposal.
Okay.
So I think it'd be helpful to hear from them. We can talk about next steps after that. That's you.
You have to go up there.
Do I approach?
Yeah, so the procedure, the, the speech that we give every month is that you have to stand at the podium, you have to identify yourself, and please don't touch the microphone, because it will pick you up where, just where it is, so. And other than that, it's super easy.
My name's Tim Cooper, I'm the applicant.
I'm the owner of, the current steward, I like to thank, of AEC Engineering. You've probably driven by it a million times. We're at 172 Lower Main Street. It's been operating out of that facility since 1990. Actually, the third owner of AEC. I, I purchased it in April of 2020, right before COVID. Auspicious timing, but things have been going well. What we do there is we, we actually fabricate industrial control panels and do the programming, the electrical fabrication, and then the computer programming that goes into these systems, which are behind the scenes in any industrial process, water, wastewater. We build the control panels for Freeport Sewer, Portland Water District, many of the water districts around here, but really any automated system that has electrical components and an operator somewhere in a control room pressing a touchscreen, that computer talk, needs to talk to these electronic components, these electrical components. And that's kind of where we, AEC sits. We custom design, build. So we need physical space to, to build these control panels. Some are the size of a college mini fridge and some are bigger than this blue drape that you see here. In fact, I was just talking to Brett. We have five enclosures that are as big as this blue drape. A big metal electrical enclosure is coming next week that we need to shoehorn into our 4,400 square foot building and, and work. I have 10 employees. That's two more than when I started. And to, to answer your question about this zoning ordinance, I was excited to plan in addition to the building, 15-foot setback seemed to be reasonable. We worked, but as you read down through the zoning ordinance, you get down to the other and it refers to this 100-foot buffer. And that had me scratching my head and I actually looked back in, in the files that I inherited and I found a memo from, from code enforcement, maybe for, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but.
Fred Reader.
He had interpreted, because there has been an addition on, actually twice, the building's been expanded on a couple of times in its recent history from 1990. And there was an interpretation that, that that buffer really wasn't applicable in, in this case. So what I meant, my proposal is, I took this to, to the town, I got some good feedback, which I appreciated, and simply making a small edit to that buffer that reflects, I think, the intent, which is to create a buffer with, to residential zones. And we're abutting a couple of different flavors of commercial zone. So by making that small edit, we think we can be true to the intent and allow AEC.
Part that point directly?
Excuse me?
Could we have a discussion about that?
I looked at the chair for what he wants to do.
Yeah, there's no, we're not in like a public hearing situation.
Yeah, I don't know if, right, this is just a discussion about the, okay, good. So I don't know about the original intent, but my initial concern is if this is a buffer of industrial zones, industrial, and I don't know what you do or how noxious it is, but within industrial zones, certain noxious things are permitted. And I'm not sure that a commercial establishment would not want that buffer if that was the original intent. So I'm just trying to figure out why, I mean, if we were to make this change, it would make a change in all industrial, throughout the industrial zone or this one industrial zone or all?
Just this one, I1.
I1.
So just the pocket on Lower Main Street.
Oh, so we could just do it in I1 and correct.
Yeah, it's, wouldn't change it in I2, which is on desert.
I mean, I think it's worth always thinking about if we're going to change zoning, what is the potential, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, when, when the guy from I2 comes along and says he wants to do it and you did it for I1 and you're saying that industrial now can be 15 feet from commercial. So I want to think about that. I'm not sure that's a problem. I understand that residential would be a bigger problem, but.
I2 is slightly different in what's abutting it, because it's a lot of rural out there, so I'm not really worried and, yeah, it's a little bit different.
I think when you, I think you're being prudent and that, and that's, that's good to, from a citizen point of view to here. I think if you look, you're going to find that the I1, which is the zone we're talking about, this works because of the LL Bean parcel, Eastland Shoe. And if you look at, we're, we're the, we're what I call the hanging chad.
Yes, it looks like it.
It kind of sticks down there. And actually, it's the cemetery.
You need industrial zoning for your facility, is that correct?
It, it's, it's most conducive to what, to what we do. So we thought this would be the, quite honestly, the easier route than trying to go through a zoning change or, or a variance, you know, process, so.
So the question, is this a case where the abutters and neighbors will get noticed when it becomes a more formal proposal?
This is not a case where they would, which is why when I thought you guys might want to talk about it.
I think they should be, you know, those commercial.
Let's talk about that at the, let's review your rules of order at the end.
Okay.
The discussion.
How many neighbors do we have down there? We just have the cricket hunt school next door. What was the cricket hunt school?
Yeah, I would have to look, I'd have to, would look at what your policy says, would probably follow whatever you do for them.
A dozen down there, so that wouldn't be hard to notify them.
Highway behind Eastland Shoe.
Yeah, it's not a, I wouldn't.
There's a couple houses up behind Eastland.
It doesn't worry me from a workload perspective, if you want to do it.
No, no reason not to notify them, there's only a few.
But I mean, if, if we're talking about rules of order change, then it's not just this one, it's what happens when they're, on the next one, like, do we, yeah, so.
Yes and no. I mean, we're reviewing this one zone.
Why wouldn't a, a notification automatically happen?
Because it's not part of your rules and order for kind of like an oddball amendment, I guess I'll call it. We can review, but we can't.
Anything that affects neighbors, there should be some public notice, it seems to be.
You could also revisit your rules of order under separate discussion and recommend that the council amend them.
Does the, does the board have the power to do that without it being in the rules?
Yes.
So that's an option that we.
Yeah, which is.
In this one case, say.
Which is why I brought it up to you. Yeah.
Efficient.
I'm not saying I'm in favor of that, I'm just saying we could.
It sounds like the rules of order should actually be changed, but, you know, the speedions.
Potentially, yeah. So it looks like the buffer, right, like, there would be, I'm, I mean, I don't have a scale on me, and I don't even know if this is printed to scale, but just, it's like 35 feet roughly from the proposed, the edge of the proposed addition to the property.
Is that right? That'd be interesting.
40 feet, something like that.
There's the 15-foot setback.
So as this is written.
I guess I'm looking down at the end, that's a little further.
As this is written, the buffer wouldn't apply to him, because there's no abutting residential zones. He's all abutting commercial. And then he would be expanding the structure but not increasing the non-conformity with regards to the setback, if that makes sense.
What do you mean, he's not increasing the non-conformity? He is increasing.
Wouldn't go any, for the setback, he wouldn't go any closer to.
There's no setback problem here.
No, no, it's a buffer problem.
Yeah, he doesn't meet the setback, there's two problems. There's a setback in the buffer, but the setback can be resolved under current ordinance. The buffer cannot. So he looked at many different options for wording, zoning change, and this is what he decided to bring forward, because it best fit the needs of him and his business. He didn't need to be compromised with the abutting properties.
We'll go back after this discussion and now look at the exact proposed change.
Yeah, I saw you.
Yep, so it's just, so where the strictly, sorry, district abuts strictly residential zones.
Is the word strictly?
Strictly already is a problem, because if you have a mixed-use zone next to it or something like that, that is residential.
Well, I think that's what they're probably trying to get around, potentially trying to, although there are no, in that district, there are no.
Yeah, so it was, actually, I can show you, it was kind of.
What does strictly mean, yeah?
Well, that's what I was going to say, is that defined anywhere?
Yeah, so the other way you could, the other way that you could do it, we have a buffer zone section under section 506, which I pulled up. So in this case, they actually list the districts. So what's kind of referred to here is rural districts, sorry, residential RR1 and 2, RP1 and 2, MDR1 and 2, and V1 and V2. So anything like mixed use or mixed commercial and residential, we don't look at as a residential district.
So we could substitute the word strictly with the definition of strictly, with list the.
This would be the, this, you could, if the, yeah, if you didn't like strictly, this could be amended to reference the zones that are abutting.
This list, which does include mixed use?
Yep, yeah, we look at those as commercial.
Right. Well, but that's the issue, so then we're next to a commercial zone. That doesn't solve his problem.
No, and I'm saying, if you, if you're okay with the concept, but you don't like the word strictly because you don't find it clear, we could work with him instead of strictly, say you need 100-foot buffer if you're in I1 and you abut RR2 or what other residential zones he abuts, VR, V1R.
Would it also work just to remove the word strictly?
I think if you find it not, Nick made a good point. It's not clear to Mitch, and if it's not clear to Mitch, who reads this stuff a lot, it's not going to be clear to the average user.
I was going to say the same thing about that word.
That's the way it should read.
It's not a precise word, so.
So we could work with the applicant to further revise that.
Then you have to think about through each one of those, right? You have to say, okay, so then it would be that list, but not with C1.
You'd only look at, if you're writing it into this, other standards of this section of the zoning, you would only look at what's around. So when I look at this map, V1R is residential, RR2 is residential, and I would not call VC3 or C3 residential, because they both have commercial and/or residential uses.
But they do have residence.
Yeah, but we don't, we haven't historically treated them as commercial. And in this case of the applicant, that wouldn't work. The 100-foot, that would be the same as what he has today.
Yeah, I mean, what, didn't we try to get, I mean, we had a similar situation, I forget when or what, what, we had like an existing use, like a buffer that applied to existing use. Basically, like, if there was a use that's already there that has a buffer requirement, then a new use can't come in.
Oh, the cannabis.
It's a cannabis, yeah. So like, if there's a daycare facility 350 feet away, you can't bring in a new cannabis facility. But if there's.
Right, he would already be there if someone comes in.
Right, so like, if, if he's already there and somebody comes in and wants to build a house, then like, that's their choice and it's not like a violation of the buffer, you know, like a retroactive buffer violation. So, I mean, is there, is there a possibility of something like that being a, I mean, I don't even know if there are houses, I mean, maybe it's not even available, I don't know, but like, what's in the, you know, parcel next to it?
I mean, realistically.
What's in the parcels next to it?
In C3, I can't.
In C3, correct. On all sides, on both sides.
Street, the meeting house, the cemetery, I believe, and the former cricket hunt school. Street, the Meeting House, the cemetery, I believe, and the former Cricket Hunt School.
Well, the cemetery's on the side next to Wilbur's Chocolate, right on the corner of Upper Hunter Road, or, yeah, it's that little purple spot right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is the road, this is the former.
Yeah, that's, that's Cricket Hunt.
And this is Eastland Shoe.
Eastland Shoe, yeah, and then coming south, it's Wilbur's Chocolate, and.
And what's in the, what's in C3 in the back there, right up against the freeway?
Some condos.
This?
Yes.
Yeah, those are condos.
That's condos.
So you're now saying that, I mean, I'm sympathetic to the applicant, I'm, I don't want to, like, you know, I'm trying to figure out can we make it work, but I'm trying to think about what are the.
Strictly, as opposed to the, because you have a lot of.
Well, yeah, because, but, but what you're saying is that it's okay for somebody to redevelop that property behind you and put a heavy industrial use, anything permitted in an industrial in I one, that close to those condos.
The other thing you might be able to do.
There's a street between them, yeah.
Yeah, there's a street between them, but.
So, yeah.
Yeah, and I can't tell from here where that zone line is, but the other thing you might be able to do is we could look at if you could word it, and we can make it work and be clear that when it abuts a use, or when it abuts a property permitted for residential use, if you like that better. Because then it doesn't matter if it's in the mixed-use.
Oh, but the properties right next door to you are theoretically, could, could be residential.
But they're not today when he comes in and makes application. The cemetery will never be residential.
The cemetery's not a problem.
That's residential.
The Cricket Hunt School building is commercially permitted.
Believe it, that's for sure.
I'd sort of like that, I do.
Property legally permitted for residential use, they have a 100-foot setback.
Yeah.
So how is that different from just removing the word strictly?
Um, because then we're clear, it's the actual use in the property, because Mitch is saying, he's concerned that in these uses, that the zones are not strictly residential, that, for example, the back parcel, if it is abutting a residential, under this, they wouldn't have the 100-foot setback. His idea is that if they're mixed-use and that, that property is being used as residential, he feels the 100-foot buffer should apply.
So you're saying it wouldn't be considered a residential zone if it's mixed-use?
We historically have not, so the other, so the options where we started was listing out the zones, listing these as all residential zones doesn't help him, he might as well just leave it as it is, so that could be an alternate solution.
And you could also say residential and mixed-used zones that include residential.
Um, no, because that wouldn't help, that wouldn't do anything for him, because he's surrounded, the C3 and VC3, he'd have the same issue that he has today, the way he is tucked in there.
Can you state, just while we're all zeroed in on this idea, again, what your idea is?
I think, I think what will work for you guys, from what I hear, that there's some concerns about the way it's written. It sounds like if we work with them and make sure the language is going to be interpreted and forced correctly, if the language were tweaked, so the 100-foot buffer was required only when the zoning district boundary abutted a use permitted for a residential use.
Like, today.
Then the 100.
At, or at the time of.
And I mean that, like.
Oh, by permitted, not permitted, you mean permitted?
Right, like, if someone illegally has a house there and they never permitted it, like, sorry, but you're not protected.
Permitted, I, I got it.
If you have the legal use of the property for residential dwelling.
It's basically what I, it's like a different framing, a different technical framing of the.
But it addresses Mitch's concern.
Yeah, which addresses.
That solves a lot of problems.
That's, I think that seems like a reasonable way to go, it's sort of, because then there's sort of like clarity for, you know, that you know that, you know, the buffer is here, you know, for certain situations, but like, but, but, but developers or potential owners, people looking at buying a, you know, you have some certainty about.
Right, if you're right next door to a condos, you can't do that.
The moment I permit my house, if that's a, I don't know, you know, yarn store now, it can't become a smelting facility in a year.
And it, and there would be a case that, you know, if someone went in next door and went strictly residential in the future, this wouldn't.
But then that's there, but there and there, coming in and doing that change aware of this condition.
Right, but also in this case, it appears, he's, he's probably going to be pretty maxed out once he does this addition, just with the site and the setbacks and all of that, so.
Right.
All right.
I'm only thinking about every other industrial zone in town, and, and what it would mean.
And not because this would affect them now, but because it has to be defensible.
It has to be depend, somebody else will come in, the logic has to be reasonable.
So, okay, does that give you and Cecilia enough to go?
Yep, Brett and I will, Brett's the new development director, as of July 1st.
Right, actually, I meant to say, information, so Caroline is not even the planner anymore, I mean, everything is.
I am, I'm dual role until we get a new planner appointed.
I thought July 1st was the.
July 1st, I also have a second title of assistant town manager.
For the second time in 12 months, yeah.
So, so, so we only have one other industrial zone in town, correct, out on the desert road?
I think we only have the two, this and the other one.
Yeah.
Yep.
The one across the street's pretty maxed out because of Beans and the Tiff and all the.
That's still the same zone as us.
Yeah, I realize that, so nothing's really going to happen across the street different in quite a while.
Right.
And the one on the desert road's pretty well maxed out.
And we're not changing that right now.
And we're not changing that anyways, and Beans just went through a major reconstruction, so, okay, I'm really not worried about this.
Okay, so do you think this is something Brett and I could work with the applicant, have it reviewed by staff, the code officer had worked with this, and bring you back something for a public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think the approach generally is a good approach, it allows flexibility, but also some measure, you know, predictability for.
Do you own the land in front of the, does your lot go around in front of the cemetery as well?
Yeah.
So it goes right over to Hunter Road or whatever they call on that street now?
It does.
Mary, what's that street called?
What do they call it now? Used to be Hunter Road Extension, but.
It's, uh. Between me and Wilbur's?
Yeah.
I was just looking at it.
It's Hunter Road, it's Hunter Road.
But that.
It's called Meeting House Road.
That little wing is, um, somebody, I, I think when we were talking about, my, my understanding is that's the, there's, because there's a historical marker there on the corner, if you know, that it's the location of the original Meeting House, so I, I'm not proposing to pave it.
Your land. So that's in your one acre calculation?
And it would, it.
Correct, but if you look at the dimensions, the, with setbacks and everything, it's, there's.
Did you get to calculate it?
Yeah.
Caroline, for the timing on this, is this something that we would be able to see next month, do you think?
Um, yeah, should be able to.
I hope so, because if we get the green light, I would love to continue with the investment I'm making in architects and engineers and get a contract.
I think this, and this, this is the type of situation that makes sense to me, to move as quickly as we can.
If you make this, so you guys would have a public hearing, make a recommendation, maybe in the same meeting, maybe not, but if you do, then go to council, they would have a meeting to set a hearing, have a hearing, and then he would go down the project review path because he would need a site plan amendment.
Right.
Months, dude.
Yeah, so you're.
Many months.
So, so he just needs an amendment at, at project review?
He would need an amendment, I don't know what, it depends, we have a couple different thresholds, but one of the review thresholds, most likely project review, based upon square footage and changes.
Well, at least.
Now, I guess we can move our portion as quickly as we can, I think that's.
We need done with something.
You should be able, we should be able to get this done.
Listen along, so you can break ground this year.
Um, so do you want to look at, you want to review your notification before we move on? Oh, fair.
Oh, yeah.
So, your standard notification, we have requirements under state law, state law wouldn't require anything other than general circulation and a legal ad in a newspaper of general circulation, we also keep email groups, anyone can join that, whether it be to stay on it forever, or if they just want to join it for a specific item, and then we post on TV, library, website, and all that stuff. So when uses within a district are proposed to be added, modified, or dropped, you notify via mail every property owner in the district, and when you're proposing an amendment adjacent to a residential district, you also send notice to the direct abutters of residential properties, they would get notice of the first meeting and the public hearing, anyone beyond that would just have to sign up for email. So if you wanted to take that approach, and I'll go through that other option, would notify everyone in I one, and then the two resident, the V1R and the rural residential that abut the district, and then you have different.
But why just residential, what if a commercial business objects?
Um, that's just going with what your policy says today, for, for another use, that's just kind of adopting. You have a second option, so when you create a new district or you move a dress, district line, you give notice to everyone in the district, and then we go out a half a mile, which will actually, we can.
Not be that much.
Do whatever you want, it actually is quite a left in the village, because you're going to pick up a bunch of condos and different things, but.
How about Tim goes next door, knocks on the door and answers the matter?
Um, and then minor changes or things that are making it clear you don't do any additional notification.
And did you indicate earlier, we could require any type of notification we want, regardless of those?
So it says, these notification requirements may be modified if a majority of the planning board members present and voting agree to increase notification, the planning board must agree to the exact extent of the modification. I, I like the, if you're going to modify it in this case, I like the idea of you using one of your existing practices, because to create a whole new procedure, then I'm going to bring this to you every time, and we do a lot of notification when there's changes in the village, like.
So is that half a mile, is that going to cap, is that going to be onerous?
I haven't run it, but I have Brett to help me.
Why would you need to?
Why would you need to go to half a mile?
Well, what's the, what was the other one, the direct abut?
Everyone in the zone, and then direct, um, direct abutting.
Residential, that's the problem, to me, that's the problem.
You can expand that, too.
Yeah, just do direct abutters, I mean.
Yeah, direct abutters.
There's people next door, and there's people up the street, just figure out what it is and send them a notice.
Yeah, I think it's, and so we do property owners of record.
Yeah, but then it's like, how, what is a direct abut?
A direct abut would be anyone directly touching the property line.
Sharing a boundary.
Any shared boundary.
It was what, three or four houses up, three or four different houses up and down Independence Drive, and, you know.
No, I don't even think you'd get that much, to be honest, Andy, because if I look at this now, let's see, so we did I one, then you have like 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, I bet you'll have like under two dozen, if you wanted, if somebody wanted to make a motion for the case of this application, all property owners within the district and direct abutters received a mail notice of the public hearing, we could do that, and I think you'd get a couple dozen, or sorry, like two dozen probably.
Seems reasonable, right?
Actually, you might get more, because we have to notify all the condos there, but it's okay.
You mean, the fact that one condo touches its own property, seriously?
Condos are all on one lot.
It's all one lot, right?
Yeah, so like.
They don't touch the property, they're across the street.
They don't touch.
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll look at the, I'll look at the zone line, make that.
They're up and across the street, the, the, the closest abut across the street is Wilbur's Chocolate. They're not really, well, they're sort of abutted down the end of the road.
Yeah, so I'd probably.
The cemetery's in between.
We'd probably do Wilbur's Chocolate, we'd do the condos, and then those last two C3 properties back there.
In the case of the condo, it's really just the condo association, it's not each and.
Each individual owner gets notified.
Really?
Remember, they're not abutting to his property, but they're abutting to I one, that's the issue, it's the whole I one changes, and it does, if they listen to what we're proposing and it comes out that way, it doesn't affect them, because it's going to say that it's not.
I don't know, I don't know if the condos do a butt, do they? I mean.
Um, yeah, based upon the way this is, we'd probably notify.
I don't think the condos, I think Lee Pushad's old house up in there is the only one that abuts, and, and those two, the one up in the.
Wouldn't we err on the side of telling more people? Is it a problem? Is it onerous? If it's not onerous, why wouldn't?
Sometimes it is, like, depending what you're doing, in this case, it's not, I mean, sometimes, like, for cannabis, we notify thousands of people, and still are, and it will take days, but in this case, it's.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't know why we're arguing about the kind, they live there, they.
I think this is a, a hole in your policy, and as we've seen different, unique amendments come forward, they haven't fit into any of the categories, so I think, generally speaking, it's something you guys could look at revisiting, for this one, I just need directive if nobody.
Yeah, I was just going to say, for this one, can we just say, we want to notify the whole zone, abutters, and the condos, and just call it good?
Yes.
And make, make that as a motion, and then.
Whole zone and any direct abutters, yep, we'd need a majority vote of the planning board, and that'll be in addition to any regular general circulation of the agenda.
Anyone?
Yeah, I'll motion to recommend that we notify all direct abutters of, of industrial zone one for the change of, uh, for the.
For the public hearing.
For the public hearing.
For the public hearing.
Did you say as well as the condos? I'm going to do the condos, I'd call them a direct abut, but you can, I don't care what you want to do.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's worth thinking about the, you know, sort of continuing to revisit the, the notification.
So tentatively, we would have that be at the first August meeting, which would be August 7th.
All right, item number five is, follow up with North Star Planning, we have just one North Star planner.
So, before we hop into that, I just want to let you know that we have, I, we worked with North Star, it's, there's been a lot going on with the workshop, and then Cecilia's been gone for a couple weeks, and Jamelle left, and Charles has taken over, and Ben's back from vacation, so we wanted a little more time to do some additional outreach for the survey, so the community survey's been extended through July 15th, we're already at, I think, about 350 surveys, I'm really trying to get to 500.
Is there any bump from the other day?
350.
Friday?
Um, I have, I don't know if they got, no, that was including Friday, yeah, we actually.
Yeah, but did, he was out there, and I was wondering, nobody's there this Friday, and I was thinking maybe I'd go, or somebody could go.
If somebody wants to go, we can make arrangements.
If it's worth it, I don't know. You know, I can't go this Friday, but I was thinking possibly Saturday, there's a tabling opportunity at some event somewhere, I was thinking I might be able to do that.
Yeah, there's a tabling opportunity at the concert at Memorial Park, which it sounds like they'll get a really good turnout, Neil at Winslow Park, they actually have a, had a concert last night, but he, I can see when the next one is, he said they get a lot of local Freeport residents, so that would be another good one, there's some opportunities, events at the community center, so I think if there's a day you're around in your board, you know, always call too, because we can see like what's going on that day, and as long as we have the tabling stuff, we just printed this new poster today, that if somebody wanted to table, they could take, but yeah, we really want to get a last push, we're going to pay for a Facebook ad for this, that will run, to see if we can get some more there as well, and we're sharing it with the council, they were pushing it, but Ben Smith is here, Ben is the owner of North Star Planning, and since Jamelle left, Ben's And since Jamel left, Ben's the new lead on the project. So I'll let him introduce himself and go up to the podium and share what he has with you guys. And we can recap the twelfth workshop.
Trying to do this without touching the microphone. Yeah, Ben Smith, North Star Planning. We've, we've met.
Definitely.
Multiple times. I, I, I did want to cover a couple of things tonight. The first is to just kind of inform people that Jamel had moved on. Everyone's aware of that. I had been involved in the project as more of a principal in charge, kind of overseeing Jamel's project management work. We'd been having regular budget and schedule check-ins. As a result of him moving on, I will be taking over more direct project management, attending more of these meetings with Charles. Sometimes it'll be just me, sometimes it'll be just Charles, but we do still, you know, have a lot of confidence in the capacity to be able to continue making sure Freeport is going to be able to meet the schedule and budget for the project that we've outlined and proposed and all agreed to. So that, that was one item. And I, before we move on to the others, I don't know if other people wanted to talk about that. It sounded like maybe Mitch had maybe some more specific questions or if other people had, you know, anything they wanted to ask or say.
I mean, I think, you know, the thought for me is just making sure that you guys have the capacity to do that and the design review. And, you know, it, it just seems like a bigger load on you most likely and, you know.
How big is the staff?
Yeah.
I mean, how?
Today, we have four full-time planners and a part-time office manager.
And you, plus you?
That includes me. Yep. So with, with Jamel, we were five and now we are four full-time planners.
I'll clarify, there are different staff working on our different projects.
Yeah, no, I know that, I know that Jamel, Jamel's time was never meant to be used much on the design review side. But it just seems like if now you're picking up, you know, some of the load that he was carrying on this, then that's less that you could do on the designer view. I'm not like, I mostly just want to make sure that your life doesn't become, you know.
Thank you.
Miserable and it trickles down to us. And not that it would be miserable per se, but like, you know, assuming that at some level you enjoy this stuff, but you still, nobody wants to do it sixty-five or seventy hours a week.
He just got back from vacation.
But he said that's all I.
Peak of freshness right now. Yeah, just got back. But, but the idea is, you know, these things happen and, and we're prepared to deal with the, the work that we need to do to make sure that projects continue to run smoothly. As Caroline had mentioned, we wanted to make sure before we even put a proposal together for the design review work, that the town was going to be okay with kind of a division of labor and, and understanding that these two projects really are separate from each other from a staffing capacity standpoint. So yes, I, I can tell you, we've all picked up an extra meeting or two every month. And in particular, I've picked up a couple more direct involvement of projects for probably the duration of those projects. But we're, I was just telling Brett, we're going to be, we are in the process of backfilling that position. And, you know, I've, I've got full confidence that we'll be able to continue the work that we need to do to, to make sure Freeport is going to be on schedule and on budget for this project as well as the other work we've taken on.
So from a staff perspective, I'm not concerned about it. You know, with our restructuring, this is going to be something that I'm still going to be taking the lead on for the town. While now have Brett as another asset for the project. He's already been helping behind the scenes and he's going to come to a meeting next week. We've already had meetings since Jamel left with Ben and Charles. And I asked them just to backpedal a little bit and just do a little more refining on some of the chapters now that we have another set of eyes. But we really haven't hit a hiccup and we're dividing and conquering. The other project, which we'll talk about later, the design review is North Star, but it's Kate, who you have not met yet. But I'm going to ask you to meet her really soon with the PRB. And a lot of that project, that's a fifty thousand dollar project, but twenty thousand dollars of that work is actually.
Cito.
To a Cito, yeah. And there's a historian. So Ben is a hard worker and he's involved in a lot of things. But there's a lot of other people involved in that project because it's so different than this project. So from a staff perspective, with our changes and the two different teams they have, I'm not concerned about it at this point.
Do you see, if you were able to find and hire somebody in the future, would that person step into this project? Or would that, maybe too early to say?
I, I think my preference right now would for them to be involved, but I, for continuity and communications, I, I want to avoid situations where you have a different project manager every three or four months. I think it makes sense at this point going forward from now till the end of the project. I'll be the main point of contact with Charles on the day-to-day staff communication and public outreach work.
Yeah, Charles, I, I like that plan. Charles had been doing a lot. He was kind of the silent partner. He's been doing a lot of the legwork behind the scenes and he's doing a lot of that editing now. So I like that. And people knew about Ben because we've worked with North Star for years. So I think it is important that we have a second base.
I think, I mean, that's the answer that I kind of was hoping. Here, I think, which is like, yeah, basically, rather than going from this to this to this, it makes more sense to try to.
Be consistent. Yeah, I agree with you.
So, and it's again, it's not, yeah, these things happen, like you said, so it's all good. All right, I'm sure you have other stuff that I.
Yeah, just a couple of other things real quickly. I, I know that members of the board have been really stepping up as regard to some of the tabling work that you mentioned just a few moments ago. Caroline and I had a conversation, I think it was earlier this week, about some additional marketing materials as new events come up, as different tabling or public awareness opportunities rise. How are we going to be best able to serve the town when it comes to social media or designing things to print for handouts, for tables, those kinds of things? So I want to spend maybe just a few minutes to see if, you know, as an example, Caroline just showed something that was hot off the press. And if there were other kinds of things that you could foresee over the next several weeks of public outreach that would be useful. We could kind of get those on the radar to put them in the pipeline and make sure that they're out for you.
Are we prominently on the website with, with that? I know that was somebody, we weren't previously.
Our webmaster is sitting at the side table. Let's see what she's done with the comp plan. We were hot and center with the survey, but let's.
You are the webmaster?
She's the best right now because she's used the platform before. Yeah, so we're right here that we have the survey. We need your input. We're right here. It's going to take you to the offsite. Sorry, I can't look at the screen and do this. And then it will take you this. I did get some feedback. This will take you right to the survey. I did get some feedback from our local reporter on the comp plan website. And so once Cecilia's back, we're going to take a look at that about getting some additional text and clarification because there's not a lot up there. There's some places that descriptions would be really helpful. People are looking for the chapters. We talked about that this week. Charles is doing a final edit. I'm going to do a final read-through next week. So we hope in about three weeks they'll be posted online. And then we'll be talking and next steps and doing some direct outreach to get really further with its comments back on the data from people that are in town and know that, like that use our facilities or, you know, our shellfish traversers, clambers, you know, things like that. So that is how we are front and center on the new website, David. I don't know if you feel like that's enough or not enough. We welcome feedback. Better than it was.
Something. It's, you know, we need your input. I mean, I'd like to see it flashing, comprehensive plan. We need your input or something like that, but.
We can't really flash, but I'm pretty sure we could try to get the color updated.
Put some red in there or something. I think, you know, if I were to show up on the website here, even if I was looking for it, I wouldn't find it right there.
Okay.
It's the middle of the bottom of.
I said, don't.
Row two or column two, row three.
We need your input.
Oh, okay, now I see. What about one of those banners at the top? Is that an option?
I don't think we have that anymore. We have someone doing some part-time communications work.
But there aren't that many people on the website, so I don't think.
No, I don't think.
There are a lot of people on the new website, but we do have someone doing some communications work for us. I believe he's back from vacation and I will reach out and see if we can get that changed to a color.
Could I just echo what you said before and maybe it came from you, Thomas? But, you know, when I was, I was tabling at, at Election Day. And I was frustrated that the information that we had didn't really explain what the comp plan is.
First off, I need to pause and just let everyone know that Mitch got twenty surveys completed while he tabled at the election, which is the record. But now you can continue because that was.
Well, that was fun.
Paper surveys?
Paper. I've set up chairs and I had them just sit right down and do it. Some other people took the card. So I think there were more than twenty because.
That's why we're getting that peak. It's not from the market. I think it's from you, Mitch.
Somebody forgot to tell them this.
Yeah, I only got the one.
The point is.
I was standing out the cards.
Every time we bring this up, in every place we bring it up, we should say a couple of sentences about, once every ten years, we plan the economic and, and, you know, building use future of the town. And so that they understand it's a, it's a big deal.
Yeah, we had talked about that the other day, just getting a general, what's a comp plan? Why is it important?
Right. Because we keep saying comp plan, we all know, nobody else knows.
Yeah, we did have a video up here, but I don't think that's moved on at this point.
Yeah, I think, I think altogether, you know, there could, if you really want these efforts to like bear fruit and to get people out, I think you've got to spend some real money, you know, marketing it. And, you know, doing a little tabling and doing the little bits of things that we've done here, it's clearly not really doing it. So I think, you know, you need to say, think about, you know, you know, twenty grand, twenty-five grand and doing a multimedia, you know, campaign through a, a real marketing firm that, you know, can reach people and the right people, you know? And I'm, we're with, I'm a marketing firm, which is what we do in a different way. But, you know, there are techniques to really reach out to people and.
Yeah, we are going to have a full-time communications person starting this fall. And so hopefully they'll be on board to help us as we get to the workshops because we actually did quite a bit. We did a direct mail, which was like forty-seven hundred households. We did about five hundred backpack inserts to the school. We've done social media. We've done the municipal bulletin, which has, I think, another seven hundred. We have a hundred and twenty. Yeah, we put it, yeah, in the direct mail for the cleanup. So we had done quite a bit, probably a couple of thousand dollars worth. And we got a hundred people at the workshop.
What do you have available to be able to do more marketing?
Yeah, we don't, we don't really, a direct mail is pretty expensive. It's.
But that is the best, that is the best.
Seventeen hundred.
Do you know if there's any upcoming mass mailings? Because I'm on the cable board with Tom and we're, we're talking about piggybacking on something else to get our survey sent to everybody in the town.
Yeah, I think we'll have one in the fall and we might not have a survey out, but the November election, we're going to have a great turnout. So that's another.
I've just been putting everything in the same envelope. Yours may not be a survey. Ours is a survey.
That's what we did in the, we piggybacked on the cleanup week, which is why we could do it so cheap because they paid for half the cost. But I think we'll have another mailing in the fall that we could piggyback on. But we, we have done quite a bit for the survey and the workshop and still, I mean, we're at three fifty and we had a hundred people.
I think a lot of, I think it's a good point. Like, I don't know, you can't really squeeze onto that little button, even if it were flashing. It can't be like a flashing banner that also says, a comprehensive plan is a guiding document for the next ten years of time. But so when you click, I'm just saying that it's, I think it is, it's hard and people, like with today's attention span.
Well, you probably change the language to click here to shape the future of Freeport. Forget about the word comp plan, you know, or something like, that's what marketing would do.
Maybe update that.
Okay. Okay, Tom's just, Tom's been also helping a lot with the new website. So he's pointing me, this is under, this is on our website. I believe it's also on the North Star website under a comprehensive plan. This is actually the video from the June twelfth workshop. And then this is a video won't play because it's myself talking, but this tells you what the comp plan is. So if you haven't seen these, we encourage you to watch them. This other one's been playing on.
So how did you get to this?
Can you add some text right at the top that says?
We went to government and planning, but I have connections. So I'm going to see if we can maybe link back to get another one of the nine.
So what we're talking about here too is all of this info is on the town website that we're looking at here. There's a project website that we've created and that we also have control over. So it does have some of those basics, but to the extent we can, as Caroline had mentioned, kind of beef up some of the narrative, add some new pages, we also maintain an email list that we regularly update people.
How big?
I think it's, I don't know, it's a couple hundred at this point.
Same people that took.
It's the same people. We know.
We haven't been able to, you know, one of our ideas was to grab the people from the downtown vision, grab the people from the, the climate plan, grab the people from.
Somebody over there just did that.
That was quick. So there's a number of lists, email lists the town has. And it, it hasn't been as easy as like just taking all of those couple thousand emails and putting them together because people sign up for different things. And if you sign up for a climate action plan, you don't necessarily want to be getting comp plan emails. So I think the town's been pretty sensitive to that.
We do share, but like you can't, like if someone signs up for a specific person, purpose, that's what their email is used for. We did share with the climate action. They did an update.
Have we emailed to everybody on any, any board or committee?
I sent a big, I sent a big email.
All the chair people.
A lot of, and I asked all the chairs of all the committees and I was pretty liberal with who was considered a chair. I mean, it went to a lot of them.
Everybody could find.
Across the board though, at anything, you're only going to get a small segment.
Yes.
That's just, that's reality. That's just reality.
From my perspective, for a community of this size, three hundred responses is not bad. I don't know, maybe, you know, you have a different experience and maybe you, you're, you're hoping and, you know, waiting for, for more engagement, for more responses. But I think between the survey responses we've already gotten online as well as in person, we've also been, I think everyone on our side of the table was very pleased with the turnout at, at the twelfth. So all of that is kind of a little bit of information and a little bit of different, there's certainly some overlap. But when you put it all together, that's going to give us a pretty good picture of the values and visions of the community. What do people see for the future? What do people want for the future? And what is that based on, those values? So that's the, the part of the process we're coming to the end of. Task one is really data collection and, and values envisioning is, is next. And now we are moving into more with this fall, and this might be a good segue into the next part of the conversation, about goals and policies and strategies. Thinking about, okay, if these are the things that are important to the town and these are the, the types of future that people want to see, what do we need to be doing in different aspects of our work around housing, the economy, marine resources, all of those.
So how do we?
Silo chapters. Now we're going to start tying them together in the fall.
So, so that, I'm, I'm interested in the process of that. Like what, how do we help? Is that what's, what's going to be put on the table at the public meetings and then we'll synthesize? We're all full of ideas about what should, about this part.
So we have some dates as we start thinking about the fall. There, there are three workshops scheduled for this fall. A housing-focused session, a natural resources, climate-focused session, and a future land use session. And we've, we've confirmed some dates on our end and with the town's general schedule. And we wanted to officially, hopefully confirm these with, with folks tonight.
Has that order been established?
These are the same dates that have been shared with you on the email.
I know, so we already know.
Yeah, so that Ben can tell you the order of the workshops, the topics.
That's what I'm saying, because there's those three and there's a certain order that might work best.
Yep, we have a predetermined order and we have consultants that worked on those lined up to be there. So the dates are.
Fixed.
Yeah, we had to fix the dates, especially for how.
Housing first and then climate?
Housing, then environment, natural resources, climate, and then future land use would be the third.
Okay, that's fine.
And so.
You said future?
Correct, future land use workshop.
So for the housing, a side note, I'm looking at Brett and Mitch, in case you weren't at the council meeting last night. We're going to talk about a way to integrate a table or something maybe to get some feedback on some of the housing committee work. So side note, we'll loop back on that with the housing committee and Brett later. But we gave Ben a heads up to, maybe we can incorporate that somehow too.
So the, the first fall workshop is housing and the date we've penciled in for that is September twenty-third. That will be with Jeff Levine on our planning team and North Star, doing some housing-focused work. A little different from the more open-ended, kind of open house session that we did on the twelfth, where we had a presentation and gave people time to bounce around to those different stations. Some people stayed for ten minutes, some people stayed for forty-five minutes. This is going to be a little more structured where we ask people to, to stay for the session. And, and we're, we're anticipating some table work with three or four exercises at each table. Much more focused on, on housing-specific issues. So I, I think Caroline had broached the topic of some other kind of coordinations with, with parallel, maybe more housing-focused activities in town. So we're going to be working to set the exact agenda for that meeting. But our expectation is that it would be more hands-on, more concrete than the high-level kind of what's your favorite place? What do you love about Freeport? We're going to start getting into a little more concrete aspects of, of planning on September twenty-third. The next session is that environmental and climate workshop with FB Environmental joining us for that in October. We still have a few dates open to choose from. So on our end, we had put forward October seventh, eighth, or tenth.
I can give you what the dates were that we had sent to the planning board.
Okay, great.
So.
We could narrow that down. That's, yeah.
We, I've booked Freeport High School cafeteria for these because it's bigger. And if we're going to be interacting at tables, I didn't think the community center would have enough room. And we'll loop back to the things we could do better differently at the next one. We also have the availability for some of these to use meeting house arts. So depending, we'll work with Ben and see what space for what topic fits. But, and we can still use FCS, but for the housing, it seemed like we need a little more room.
As many people as you could get, right.
Yeah, yep. Okay, so we had Monday, September twenty-third, these would all be evenings. We had Monday, October seventh and Monday, November eighteenth. That is bef, the November one's a little tight, it's before Thanksgiving, but we had to work around the consultant's schedule, which was pretty busy because we'll have Nick a seat over there.
It's the week before Thanksgiving, that's fine, it should be fine.
Yeah, especially it's on a Monday.
You mean Thanksgiving is that Thursday, right?
No, it's not that Thursday.
I think it's the week after, it's late this year, yeah.
How is it, okay.
Ten days later would be, well, let's double check, but.
So, I, I think that with those, those dates, if the planning board is good, we will continue to work on venues and, and nail down the specific agendas for those. But we had penciled in those dates with the, the other members of our team and we'll firm those up if that's acceptable to the board and make that the plan. Great. So, I, I think those, those are the three items that I wanted to cover this evening. I, I am not sure how much more on your agenda you wanted to, to discuss. I know that there's gonna be some opportunity over the next week or two, we're gonna be working with staff on a little bit more of a debrief from the twelfth. At the next time we see you in August, I believe, at the regular scheduled meeting, we'll be able to share kind of a report breakdown of what we heard on the twelfth, as well as the survey data, which should be in pretty good shape by then. Again, that's gonna be closing on the fifteenth, so I think by that, that meeting in August, we'll be able to start to share some preliminary findings from that as well. The third thing we'll need to talk about is, is more specifics around the September event. We'll, we'll have two more meetings with the planning board before that September meeting, but we wanna at least start getting into a little more of the, the nitty-gritty for that next month.
Okay, that's just the question I wanted to ask, which is, you know, can you share with us how you intend to run those meetings so we can comment and think? Are you getting to the answers or the questions that we wanna get to?
Yeah, we're, we're happy to share that. I, I think as, as far as like a general approach, as, as we get more from the very highest level of values and visions and start to drill down to more specifics, that, that really kind of culminates in the, the land use, future land use workshop. But the housing and the natural resources workshops are important building blocks to get there.
Right.
So, we will be probably less flip charts and post-its and more table work and formal reporting out from.
I don't know what table work means, I'm trying to get to how much.
Like smaller group focused activities. So, like having people sit around with maps, having people start to think about policies and programs that would be appropriate to consider implementing or continuing to, to work on when it comes to housing in particular for the September event.
Sort of be like a moderated focus group type of situation?
A lot more small, smaller group moderated table work, meaning people kind of sitting around and rolling up their sleeves more than, you know, drinking coffee and walking around talking about.
I wanna make sure we're focused, I mean, it's very easy to get in the platitudes of we need more of this or, but I wanna know what, how much of it, where does it go? I mean, that's what we have to figure out, I think, is how much, how big, how lot, where.
The where does it go, well, most likely, Ben.
And that goes into the land use, I understand, but at least.
I mean, I think if we have the opportunity to get some at, that feedback at both, that would probably be helpful for Freeport as a community as we've had some challenges with some growth in different areas.
Do you think we, I mean, is it, yeah, I, I mean, I, I guess I'm, I get, I'm a little bit torn between, like, if we go, if we say, well, can you guys tell us more specifically what we're gonna do at the housing workshop, like, next month so that, or at our first meeting next month? And that's one approach and, but then at the same time, like, you know, we hired you guys to do this work and I, you know, I wanna trust you to do it and trust your expertise to do it too, so I.
We'll come back, we, we have a couple meetings with them before then, so at the September meeting, we'll come back with a concrete plan of what we're gonna do at the housing meeting. I'll coordinate with Brett on behalf of the housing committee and then we'll talk about this initial survey results out the August seventh.
Yeah, my inclination is get the information and, and trust your process and let, you know, please let us know how we can be helpful, like, if we're gonna be the moderators or at some of this or some of us or whoever's interested. I mean, that, you know, that sort of thing, like, I'm just thinking logistically, like, there's only two of you right now, like, there's you and Charlie, I mean, you can't moderate every table.
We can pull in other folks, and we do have other folks on the team. So, to be a, like a table facilitator, I would expect everyone who can make it to that meeting on September third from the planning board would have a job to do. Like, like we did on the twelfth, whether it's, you know, signing people in or directing people to where they need to be, or if it's actually facilitating some discussions with friends and neighbors. So, I think the, the expectation will be that, that you'll be involved, but we'll certainly have folks, Kate and Sam may also need to be there from North Star Planning. And, you know, there's, there's Freeport staff that are, I expect, would, would be more than happy to be involved in that as well. So, we'll figure out the exact plan, but I, I, I think from a coverage standpoint, that evening will be more than fine.
Yeah, we'll have all hands on deck. We might be able, if we can, between now and then, if we can work with North Star a little more for the next three meetings, if we can solidify times and locations, we might be able to do one more direct mail postcard with a save the date for all three. But I think for the housing, when we're really gonna need help from the planning board to spread the word, to get people there sharing it, I think we struggled getting posters and stuff like that, so we might, you know, hands on deck to spread.
If you have all the materials, all the stuff that can go online particularly, between everybody here, we probably can do a lot.
Yeah, and so we're, we're putting everything on Facebook, so if you use that, you can share, it, your best really to share the town's links just for record retention. And then we're trying to send stuff in a simplistic enough way that you can just forward it for some things. But, yeah, if there's definitely stuff we can get, let us know, we can print posters and all that. I think the only other thing I wanted to hear from the board is if you had any feedback on the twelfth workshop, either your personal thoughts, what you liked, what you didn't like, what we should look, do a little different next time, or if you've heard from the public at all.
I did get one bit of feedback from the public while I was tabling, a couple of things actually. One of them is just, well, one of the things that I, the common theme was, I think I've done that survey before, you know? There's been a lot of survey, visioning surveys going around the town of Freeport recently, so that's, that's, there's a little fatigue out there. But the other thing that I heard directly about the, the workshop on the twelfth was one, one person just commented they didn't, didn't, they, they wanted to continue the conversation and not break out into, break out groups and do, do that. Cause they just really didn't think that worked well and, for them and, and they, they said, well, and if you were there, you would have noticed that everybody left after ten minutes, as soon as they broke up the, you know, and started doing, doing that, kind of the group work. So, I'm just, feedback I got.
That wasn't what I saw and experienced, but I don't, I was disappointed that at the end when we all came back together, there were much fewer people.
Yeah, people did let out, I mean, I think that's generally, it's a tough time of night and what, I mean, one thing, as the, you know, the always representing the parents of young children cohort in town. I mean, I think, it's just inherently, it's a tough time of night to do like a six P M. meeting and get, and, you know, we always, and I love all one hundred of the people who came out, but I knew like, you know, seventy-nine of them already from every other town event. And it's great, I mean, I, and that's one of the great things about this community is that we have a really strong core of people who care and who, who are willing to roll their sleeves. But I wanna hold, continue to reach other people as well, and I really hope that those people keep coming. It's not that I don't want them to keep coming.
Still think you're, you're only gonna get, again, a small segment of people, you just, it's just the nature of it.
It's, no, I, I totally get it.
You can spend millions of dollars advertising it and you're still gonna get pretty much.
Yeah, and so I just wonder if there's an opportunity at some point to do, and maybe it's not, maybe it's not like directly North Star involved, or maybe it's some other, some other way to do an event that works more for.
It's hard to reach people.
Younger families or a different.
So, well, that's a great segue to one of the things we talked about yesterday, now that we need volunteers.
Great.
So, one of the.
We need volunteers.
One of the things that I said to Ben, you know, we struggled with the kids area, we actually had someone from RSU. We didn't wanna put like a kids area out in the hallway because logistics at that space, but we talked about how I was out in the hallway for signup and the families were outside of the room. So, we talked about doing that a little bit different and I was like, well, I have some trucks in my basement I can bring, like, just something to keep the kids busy would help and, you know, maybe in the same room, which would work better, the high school. I actually was surprised, I met some new people at the workshop. And there is actually an opportunity, I was gonna reach out to Sarah at Freeport Community Services. So, the youth is always hard and it's really hard to get stuff into the schools other than the elementary schools in the backpack stuffers, I'll call them. We don't really have the same ability beyond a poster at the high school and the middle school. Peter Wagner at Community Programs was great, he said that he'll have some ways he can work with us. But Freeport Community Services on August seventeenth kind of has this community day and it's two-part. They have like a fest, a birthday festivity, I think, in the evening, but during the day, it's an opportunity for kids and families to come get backpacks and school supplies and there can be informational tables. I thought that would be a great opportunity to get, I think it's probably gonna be busy, talk to Sarah, is we getting a couple planning board members to that? And then we can, what are some kind of, I don't know, erasers, pencils, I don't know, something to share. So, I believe that's August sixteenth, so we thought that would be a good opportunity for kind of a unique tabling with a different target audience.
Yep.
What about any of the school newsletters that go out? Cause every single school sends out a newsletter.
Yeah, they really.
At least once or twice a month.
Able to share a lot of things in the upper-level schools, they don't share surveys.
But even just information about meetings?
You couldn't put it in one paragraph for more?
I can revisit that, but they have some pretty strict policies.
Really? Okay.
Yeah, you would think for town, you know, town stuff, it might, there might be a, but I don't know, that's not my role, I don't.
You'd think for thirty-eight million dollars.
Thank you, very much, exactly.
Not our role, so anyways, we'll keep trying.
Yeah, so I, I think we will continue trying to reach those new people. I mean, to your point, certain people are gonna show up to evening meetings and others won't, but if you can provide opportunities to hear from them at the farmer's market or they can take an online survey, you can hear from them maybe in different ways.
I think another thing is.
They won't take the online survey, you gotta get them to take it right there, I think.
That's an interesting, yeah, I mean, part of me, it's, it would be like a sort of modest proposal, but like as we get down to, into the details, I mean, sometimes that work tries to, it's like, oh my gosh, did you hear what, you know, what might happen in town? You know, it's like, oh, the planning board wants to allow, you know, ten-story buildings and, you know, shut down all the streets, it's like, once people start hearing the specifics, I think it's gonna bring out a different, a slightly different group too, so anyway.
Why don't we announce ten-story buildings?
Yeah, that's, that was my.
Right, 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 right.
You didn't hear it here first.
What if they said, would you like ten-story buildings?
That would be, that would be a nice welcome for the new planner.
That is a good way to catch people right there.
You build one building.
Even multi-line of that off its air.
I don't want that, unless anyone thinks that, I, I am not in favor of ten-story buildings.
Chalmers, that's not the heading.
Lick bang.
Don't, don't put that on the headline, Twitter's Chalmers.
Planning board kids that have ten-story buildings.
Okay, I think we're ready to move hopefully on to item number six.
Thank you, Ben.
Well, as to get us out of here by eight, very latest.
See you soon.
Thanks, Ben.
See you soon, Ben.
So, I have a big fancy table I'm gonna show you, but before we do that, the other part of North Star, Kate Burch, who is working with us on the design review update, one of the things they wanna do early in that process is have a joint meeting with project review board and planning board. And so.
Who does?
North Star as part of the design review ordinance update to get some feedback.
Now, we're on that subject, okay.
Yeah, cause we're under number.
Six.
Six.
Six, yes, I'm with you now.
So, they ideally end of July or early August, I feel like July's kind of close. I didn't know if the board might have availability, maybe August fourteenth, or we could do some workshop before the meeting on the seventh possibly? If people have the ability to come earlier.
I've, I've done two of the second Wednesdays and I.
Can you do the first Wednesday earlier?
That would be irregular.
Yeah, but if we like, if we did like a four to six workshop and then a six o'clock meeting.
I mean, just make the meeting on the seventh long, starting in the afternoon, do it late afternoon.
Well, that makes it sound awful when you say it that way, but yeah.
Oh, no, I think that's better.
Yeah, do you guys like that idea? We'll invite the P R V and if it works for North Star. Okay.
I think I can make the seventh, I don't think I could make, what was the other date you had?
The fourteenth.
There's a good chance I couldn't make that.
Fourteenth scares me.
Fourteenth, I think I'm out of town.
Ben, do you guys, do you know if you guys could possibly do the sevens?
I, I have plans on the seventh, I think.
Okay.
This would be late afternoon then, before the, like four-thirty, how much time?
I was thinking, I, I know, I'll coordinate with Kate if, you know, I probably wouldn't do before four because I know a lot of you have other commitments. It sounds like Wayne won't be able to be there.
Not a hundred percent sure, but.
Okay.
Expected to go to.
Do you think this is something that would go until like five thirty or six?
Probably, and then you would be there at six.
We have a six o'clock meeting that night, so the question is, do we do this four-thirty to six or four to six or something like that?
Okay, let me, let me talk and see if I can pull that off. I like the idea of trying to load it into one night. So, okay, let me talk to Kate on Monday. So, tentatively, if people wanna reserve the seventh, I don't think it would be more than two hours. Okay, so we have been working.
I don't know about others, but that earlier is better than like going till ten-thirty at night.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I don't, yeah, I don't, I'm with you Mitch. So, here are some updates on the website on the screen, do we like that better?
Yes.
Got a couple of.
Can you?
What Mitch?
Well, I realize you only have one line there, so I'm, I'm gonna just be quiet.
It says, watch the, it looks better on my computer than it does on that screen. It kind of shows in bright red underneath, watch the videos here, it looks more muted on the screen, but on your computer, it stands up.
Oh, learn, oh, 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 I like that.
When the town manager comes to your meeting, you get priority treatment.
Does that also mean it might change, like, somebody at the next meeting might be like, hey, can we get one of those and then?
That's what happened the last time we had the buttons, but I, I haven't seen button wars yet, so, but these are important.
What happens when you press that watch the informational videos button, what do you, where do you?
And, I mean, we're only, we only need it for two weeks, right? Then you go to this page and you get these two videos.
So, right there, can you put, and can you put some text at the top that says, this is what we're talking about?
The video explains it.
I know, but not everybody's gonna press the video until you need a teaser, you need a, a, a test, something to say.
You want like a little description on the comp plan.
Just say like.
The comprehensive plan shapes the future of Freeport for the next ten years.
Click here to learn more.
That's all, something simple, but that much.
Guides, guides land use and zoning policy.
Guides land use and zoning policy.
Yes, we will see if we can.
All right, we got it.
Add something, I feel like Brett and I really need to catch up on videos for the website. Okay, um, thank you for your feedback on that. So, we've been, we keep a lot of notes of different things that we're working on and I, as I opened this before the meeting, it's already out of date. Hold on, let me zoom in. So, we have this table here and I'll, I'll zoom in so you can actually read it. It's kind of a working progress, but it's set up in columns and so it has a column for current planning board items. And we'll zoom in and go through it. This really long column is ordinance cleanup identified by staff. We have some changes in the pipeline for state and federal laws, we have something in here that I want feedback on, things the planning board identified. This is a table out of the comp plan, things that I don't think we've addressed, not that we necessarily want to at this point because it's so old.
Out of the old comp plan, all the things that weren't, were there. Out of the old comp plan, all the things that weren't, that are in the comp plan and weren't addressed?
I believe so. Quite a few of them actually were addressed, and the way they were addressed is the community didn't wanna do a lot of them. But these are what I think, and a lot of this, I was going off memory.
It's a luscious list, I'm sure, to pick through.
And then we have some stuff from the downtown vision plan that, and this is only stuff that specifically noted the planning board. And then we had recommendations out of the housing committee, nothing got forwarded to the planning board at this point. They got forwarded to others. And then the climate action plan would have quite a bit for the planning board, but that is still in the final stages of review by the, the council. So this will get further refined, but it's something we'll kinda be looking at as we, you know, especially as we bring new staff in and kinda reallocate duties. So can you even read this?
We're not gonna go, we're not gonna go through this entire table tonight, are we?
Yep, we're, line by line, Mitch. No, I just, these are, so just for current things, Cecilia's still working on the changes for the multifamily to site plan. We obviously have comp plan, we're about to start design review, and I think you're gonna get two, two suggestions from PRB. One is regarding looking at the standards for temporary activities, cause I've had that come up a lot lately. One is to see if, we're trying to work with DEP to see if we can change the process for shoreline stabilization applications, because the PRB's getting so many and they're pretty time-consuming. Under state law, they are supposed to go to planning board, in this case, they go to PRB because they serve that function, but that's something. And then the PRB is trying really hard to go all digital, which also requires some ordinance changes. So those are just like some current things. We have a whole list of cleanup, and we'll continue to refine this and send it to the planning board, so you can read it. Under state and federal laws, we have stuff we need to do for telecommunication, mobile home parks, manufactured housing. We have some shoreline zoning definitions that we talked about the last time, we need to update in the subdivision ordinance to match shoreline zoning. And then DEP has some low-impact development. The latest from Albert is we're still waiting for directive from DEP on what that language should be, so that's in the pipeline. I think the only thing we had on here that Cecilia had noted was when you guys talked about LD 2003, you had flagged something, I think it was actually Wayne, to consider restrictions on the number of multifamily housing units in some districts, and so in particular, were there other things that the planning board has specifically identified that they wanna be, you wanna be working on in all your free time?
There were two different numbers, and I was, I was asking, why don't we bring it all up to the higher number?
Okay. Yeah, I think it limited to like.
It was like a cleanup thing.
Consistency.
Okay.
It was a consistency thing.
So it wasn't really totally remove it, it's just like, it was more of a cleanup?
Yeah, I was just trying to advocate for the, for the largest, you know, number.
Was there anything else that you guys can think of that the planning boards identified? No?
I'm, I know there is at least one thing that I've thought of recently, and I can't think of what it is.
Okay.
So we're gonna get access to this, that we could pick through it?
Yeah, we're gonna go, we'll go through and refine it. I, I don't really see you, I see you more adding stuff to it, to be honest, yeah.
That's what we would do, and, and circle, I mean, I'd love to go through that 2011, if that, you know, I've read that plan a bunch of times, but I haven't seen a list that says this is what the planning board's supposed to do about it.
So we.
And we could circle the ones that are still relevant or, you know, need to be.
So we, what I did there, I had a intern a couple summers ago, and I had him put it all on a table. It had like all the implementation strategies, and so I basically went through that from what I could recall from memory of things that they didn't do, and I had asked Sam if he, you know, knew some of it with his institutional knowledge. But yeah, let me work on cleaning this up, and when we get a little more refined, I'll send it to you guys to identify stuff, or also if there's things you guys have flagged that we can add to that column there.
I know I have notes somewhere that I can.
Yeah, and some of yours, I feel like when you guys look at this, some of this in stuff identified by staff, and I guess you guys have probably flagged some of that at this point too. So there's a lot of projects.
I mean, we still have the big, the big ones are gonna take the vast majority of time.
Yeah, yep. I think really, you know, like we, as opportunity, we have some big projects going on right now, but as we look to bring in a new planner and obviously we have the new development director, we really wanna look at how we can be best utilizing our team to get some of these things done, even if it means, you know, plugging some small things in.
Right, sometimes it's a matter of 10 minutes at a meeting, of just, this is why we're doing this, it makes sense for these reasons.
Yeah, there, there's definitely a lot of, I mean, cleanup isn't fun, nobody wants to do, but there's a lot of ordinance cleanup that.
What if we just do a little bit, every, you pick two every time, and we just do a little bit?
Yeah, I think like.
Does every one of those things then have to go into town council?
Yeah, so it's actually, like a little ordinance cleanup is actually a big lift because we have notification, we have legal notices. We have, you know, depending what we're doing, we could be notifying within a half mile, we gotta go planning board, we gotta council, so.
Bundle.
It is, yeah.
Occasionally it'll slow down other bigger stuff, you know, it's like, hey, while we're in here, we gotta clean it up, but then the cleanup bends up.
Yeah, so every time like we bring something, Cecilia's great, like she'll try to go through and look for the cross references, and we try to clean up and do like search for terminology, but it's just like, yeah, never ending. So, okay, well, I'm sure this and revisit it, we just kinda wanted to show you what we've been kinda putting together.
That would be super helpful, I think. Looks really organized and good.
I think so. I haven't spell-checked it yet, so let me do that.
All right. I don't understand why Excel can't spell-check stuff.
It can, you just have to tell it to.
Oh, well, okay, maybe, yeah, it shows you how lazy I've gotten in the new internet age, but, all right.
So if you'd like an Excel lesson, you can go up to review and check spelling.
We're so Googled now, it's.
I know.
Well, but sharing is.
All right, I don't remember, unless anybody has any other thoughts or questions on that. Item number seven is persons wishing to address the board on non-agenda items. Brett, you're kinda the only.
Are you gonna introduce yourself, Brett?
And we don't have anybody on Zoom, right? Anyone, anymore, we had somebody on Zoom.
I'll just give you a quick update, since Brett won't introduce himself. Brett is the new direct, development director, and he's working to hire a new town planner. So I think we'll be doing interviews in the next couple of weeks.
And then you still service EPC as a, how, did EPC get screwed in this?
As a reminder, Brett.
I'm glad, I'm excited about.
Don't touch the mic.
Is there a mic? Do you have a mic?
Brett is now an employee of the town of Freeport.
But somehow your, I mean, your interests are obviously still aligned directly.
There'll be strong collaboration, there's a lot of aligned interests.
Yep. And so Brett working to hire a planner means that a future town planner would work, would report to Brett? And any other associated planning staff?
Yeah, so the new town planner will replace me.
Right.
And so I think you'll see them work, like you'll see Cecilia, I think, still probably staffing your meetings and working on some of the routine projects, and then you'll probably see the planner for some of the bigger projects or things that they're collaborating on, different projects.
Yeah, likewise.
Congratulations.
Okay, do I hear motion to adjourn?
So moved?
And a second? All in favor? That was the slowest adjournment motion I've ever, I was like, you guys wanna stay or something?
Sharon, that was seconded by Mitch. Okay.